Thanks, Brian. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's Farmington School Board meeting. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have public participation. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak?
You guys are actually on the agenda. So you can jump up there if you want to.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you like to come up to the mic over there and state your name for the record?
Hi, I'm Savannah Hamm. I'm a sophomore here at Farmington High School, and I'm part of the Student Voice Committee.
Thank you.
I'm Tristan Isles. I'm one of the candidates to hopefully get the Student Voice Committee started and dolled for future years.
Thank you.
I'm Taylor Emerson, and I'm also a part of the Student Voice Committee and I'm also a sophomore.
Thank you.
I'm Hannah Smith. I'm also a part of the Student Voice Committee and I'm also a sophomore.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, I'll open it up to the people at home. Jen, do you have anybody that would like to address the board?
If anyone on line would like to speak, please indicate in the chat or if you'd like to unmute yourself at this time. No one has indicated online so far.
Okay, thank you, Jen. We do have another public session towards the end of the meeting. At this point, we have some minutes. Next on our agenda, we have minutes, meeting minutes of November 16th, public session, along with three non-public sessions. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the public session minutes of November 16, 2020, along with non-public session 1, 2, and 3 as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Stan.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 8, 2021, public session in addition to non-public session 1 and non-public session 2 as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm going to abstain as I missed part of those.
Okay, that's four yes, one abstention. Next, we have meeting minutes of February 15.
We're going to make a motion to approve the February 15, 2021, public session along with non-public session 1, 2, and 3 as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we get into new business, at least one thing I noticed is we don't have any name tags. So for some of our people in attendance, I'll just, my name is Charlie King. I'm the current chairman of the board.
I'm Joel Sagin, the vice chairman.
Tim Brown member.
I'm Joshua Whitehouse member.
And online, we have?
I'm Stan Trina. I am at home.
Okay, so that's who we are. So next in the new business, we have introduction of student school board representatives, which they've already done. But go ahead, Ruth Allen.
Actually, I'm going to let Mr. Roberts.
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Is it possible to turn the camera towards the speakers?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Can you see him?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Paul Roberts, principal of Farmington High School. The reason why I'm here tonight is the four students that introduced themselves earlier. This is a group of students that are interested in basically being student representatives on the school board. They basically came to me a while back with a kind of a written proposal, and basically they're volunteering to do this. And so we are going to create a schedule, so the first and third meetings, one of them will be here being a student representative on the board. And so we just wanted to take tonight really to have them introduce themselves to you so they know, so you know who they are. Okay?
So hopefully, welcome aboard, and hopefully we'll be able to make sure that they're prepared as they can be for whatever topics that we're going to have on the agenda.
Yeah, this, they, they meet with one of their English teachers, and they discuss also what's going on. So yeah, they can be, so they can be prepared.
Okay, so at least they can do whatever public information is available to take at least a look at and research regarding the topics. So if they have something they want to add in the discussion or give us their thoughts, they can.
Absolutely, that's the goal.
Can they get the same packet we get other than the non pertinent?
Yeah, they, I will make sure that the agenda is sent to each of you, and I'll send it to all of you so that in the event that you've swapped, that's fine. And then the packet will be, the public portion of the packet will be available to you. And so that'll get sent to you electronically.
Now, what about the information that may be late, late posted on our Google Drive?
I will send an email saying, here's what it is. Obviously, I'm not going to expect them to plow through tons of information by.
Right, but some of that, sometimes that information does not get necessarily out by Friday.
Right.
But may, may be available through the weekend for them to, to get their hands on, so.
So the goal is to get the majority of the packet out to you by roughly 5:00 Friday afternoon. There are some things that we don't get until Monday, so those will go up. And if, over the weekend, I will at least send you an email saying there's something new in the packet so that you know to check the board folder. And what I will do is a separate student board member folder because there are some pieces that may be in the, the other folder that aren't necessarily pertinent for you guys.
Tim?
Mr. Roberts, you know, I apologize for asking this. Are all our students that are here tonight representative sophomores?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you, Paul.
Yep, you're welcome. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can I make a recommendation that as we're moving forward, and first of all, welcome and thank you, this is something that we've asked for a long time. Can we make a agenda item weekly that is student representative? And that way, if they have any thoughts, process, or concerns, they have their own tick mark on the agenda that they can address us?
At least for the first and third meetings.
Right, okay. So yeah, it probably makes sense to put that under, under new business.
New business or reports?
Or reports, or in that area. I mean, towards the front of the meeting.
Okay.
So that we, because sometimes some of the other old business, I mean, depending on what it is, I'd like to get it to front of the meeting so that everyone's fresh and ears are perked up to hear what they have to tell us. So this year will start, which meeting?
Next week.
Next week. That will be the first meeting after elections, which are tomorrow, and there'll be a reorganization of the board, which is where we reappoint members for this seat, Joel's seat, other subcommittees. So there may be some movement on the board as far as whose responsibilities may change. So that'll be an interesting meeting to be at. So the chairs and vice chair are voted on by the membership. So we pick leaders as a group, and it's not based on, I don't think there's any requirements, not based upon seniority or anything else, it's based upon who the board feels should run the meetings and participate on various subcommittees, based upon time or expertise. Anything else, Ruth Allen, did I miss?
Do they have any questions of us?
Oh, do you have any questions of us? Okay, saving them for next week. Well, thank you for coming, and we look forward to your input. Next, we have a junior class prom proposal.
Hi, everybody. I'm Aaron Walter. I'm the class president for the class of 2022, and with me today is our class advisor, Ms. De Toronto. She teaches biology as well as other elective science classes here at Farmington. Today, I come to you with two proposals, one for our penny sale and one for our prom. Starting with the penny sale, it's a spaghetti dinner, it's the penny sale and the spaghetti dinner that's toasted normally by the sophomore class every year. It's a, it's a tradition for Farmington, but unfortunately, last year, we weren't able to have this due to COVID. We, it was, it was about a week before we could actually have the penny sale that it was canceled. So currently, we have everything that we need for one. But now that we have the appropriate COVID safety precautions, we're hoping to have it approved. Some possible safety measures that we have going forward, all attendants and attendees will be wearing masks. All attendants and attendees will be completing a COVID form, and their temperature taken will be recorded at the door. Who, the, the students that'll be working the event will be wearing gloves and will be the only ones touching the, the, the stuff on the tables. We will be, instead of opening the doors up to everybody, we're going to be having groups of up to 50 people max in the gym in 30-minute blocks. And the doors will open at 2:30 PM, and meals will be ready for the first group by 3:00 PM. So every 30 minutes, a new set of 50 people will come in and will, will re-sign in the, the new group. The area will be wiped continually by the attendants working the penny sale area, and the meals will be prepared by masked and glove attendants and will be ready to be served in a takeout container for each person to just bring with them. So you would go through one way marked by tape, and you'd go through and look at what you would possibly be interested for items. And then at the end of your time slot, you'd go and pick up your meal and take it home or possibly eat outside at tables that are monitored by us and wiped down continually. And then at 6:00, the winners will be drawn and called or emailed, and then the winners can return to retrieve their items until 8:00 PM. So that's, that's what we have for our penny sale, and we're looking for April 3.
Okay. Question on the groups of 50. Will they be people being able to get reservations for certain time slots, or will people be there just at the door waiting and will be, are they going to be able to reserve ahead to not be waiting for, say, an hour or an hour and a half for their group to go in?
We're, we're going to have it, so people, when they buy their tickets, they can reserve a time slot that's available, and we'll show them what time slots are being filled up and like that.
Okay, good. Anyone else with any questions? Tim?
My only point is, you're going to see some people attend from outside of the school community. This is a pretty well-known fundraiser. So within the forms, the normal forms, we don't, we, we normally use don't necessarily have phone numbers. Like to collect phone numbers so that if there is a.
Use something like this.
Something like that with a phone number on there so that if there is an issue, we can contact.
Yeah.
Somebody outside of the school community.
Okay, is anyone else, any questions?
I do. In addition to the class advisor, who else for adults helps supervise this event?
It would be, we would have any other, like, class, like, teachers that are technically not class advisors, but they're like, they're the advisory teachers for the class that would come and help out and supervise the students.
Is there usually a ballpark figure of how many adults help with that?
Usually, there's an adult per 10 kids or so. We have, I have teachers who have volunteered to help out with this as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions? Ruth Allen? They have two proposals. Were you expecting us to rule on each one or ask questions?
Probably a separate vote for each.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's a pretty good proposal. I guess, did, when staff reviewed this, did they see any things that may need to be changed far as COVID-19 precautions or procedurally to make this a safe and fun event?
I would say we're certainly going to be working with our facilities folks as well, and just watching the numbers. I mean, if there's a sudden spike beforehand, we may have to reevaluate where we are, but otherwise, I think they've got some things in place that will work.
So if they're serving food from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, that means there's 100 per hour, so they're anticipating up to 300?
It's up to 50. We put the number 50 in there. I don't, I don't know that we'll get 50 within a timeframe.
What were the historical numbers that you've seen in the last few years?
I am not sure.
I want, as I've, as I've gone to dinners of the past few years, it's usually been somewhere between 150 and 200-ish.
At one time, at one time. That's the difference. We're going to break them down.
Right. So it's a different format.
Right.
And, but the fact that it's to-go, we may actually have more folks come through.
But this seems reasonable based upon what prior attendance is, they have enough time and enough slots for the potential guests. Okay.
You may find that people, depending upon how spread out your items are in the gym, they may need more than half an hour to wander. That may be the one thing that you need. I think the half-hour time slots for the food makes sense. The other piece, you may need to spread that out just a little bit more.
Should we open the doors earlier? Make it 2:00 and 45 minutes?
You could do that. You could do that. And then, you know, if you have rolling service on the to-go, then you have, if somebody goes through in 15 minutes, they know what they want, they've dumped all their tickets, they want their spaghetti and out, then they can do that. If you've got somebody who's lingering a little bit longer, they have more time to get through it before there's folks banging on the doors.
Any thoughts or discussion? I'll make a motion to approve the penny sale, and with the caveat that can be amended or revised as the administration sees fit.
Second thought.
Any discussion? They're giving you flexibility if you want to change the times, how the format lies. The essence of it stays the same, and you can adjust as necessary. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Stan. Go ahead, next, on your prom, prom proposal.
All right, with my, with the second proposal tonight, it would be for our prom. We're looking at May 15. We know that the seniors are going for May 29, so we just, we're, we're communicating with each other, and we both know, we have a pretty good idea of what each other are doing. The, our idea for prom this year would be to have it on the football field with a large canopy, and possibly have a dance floor and a music playlist that as a class, we're going to create and get approved by the school. We're going to reach out to the Farmington Fire Department, and we're going to have them inspect our setup. We predict approximately 65 to about 80 attendance for the prom. And for our freshmen, we're going to reach out to local businesses like Farmington House or South Main. And following, like, safety guidelines, we're going to have pizza or something, something else provided, and we're going to monitor and only allow a certain number of students at a time to go up and grab refreshments. The big thing for us is just having something this year. Having the penny sale get canceled was, was big. It just kind of brought everybody's morale down. So having, having a chance to make some memories, even if it is small, would be huge for our class, and it would be a really big chance to just kind of get together and kind of look back on the year together. We're willing to comply with any regulations that you guys would like to put in place or any suggestions that you guys have. And I'd just like to thank you guys for allowing me to prevent or present our proposals tonight.
You're welcome. Questions or comments?
I got a question.
Go ahead, Tim.
You're talking about the, using the outside field. Is that because you guys feel because of the COVID that the gym's inappropriate, or are you looking more for something special for prom?
It would help with socially distancing. And also, I, talking with other students in my class, we all really like the idea of having an outside prom to begin with. And with being short on funds because of the, having a hard time getting fundraisers going through COVID, we feel like the football field would be our best bet.
Thank you. Charlie?
Go ahead.
There may be a, a chance that with this new funding coming out, that we can probably get that tent covered under our new government funding that we're getting. I'll find out more when that comes out, but if we can get that covered, that's less expensive they have to. It'd be great for them to share it, that way we can.
Right, definitely would be.
Cover under both.
Some assistance that they, it looks like they need.
That was my next comment, but I also want to.
Go ahead.
Talk about something. I mean, most of the students that are going to show up to the prom, particularly females, are going to be in formal wear. When we talked about the senior prom, we talked about potential porta-paties out in the field. Thinking about it and having a daughter, I'm saying, what female student's going to want to go on a porta-party with formal wear on and put their makeup and check their hair? It's just not going to work out. So somewhere in the plan for staffing, I'd like to see a mechanism where, you know, maybe two staff members, if people have to use the facilities, we allow them to use the bathroom. We've got key card access now. I'd like to move that into the event to make it as comfortable as it can for our students.
And you're looking at that for both junior and senior prom?
I would say both. Obviously, we want to communicate that to the seniors, but while the juniors are here now, I kind of wanted to say it. And again, I think as a board, I'd like to have the discussion of what is prom-related expenses and what are COVID-related expenses? And I'm hearing time and time again, and I'm seeing that students have had a rough, a rough year, and it's not over yet. So if we can accommodate them with any expenses, any expenditures that are covered by our COVID funding, I think we should do that. They've worked hard for the money they raise, and I think the money they raise should go to their prom and, and make that memorable night that you guys deserve.
Anyone else? Ruth, Ruth Allen, any thoughts? Is that something you think we can do far as the bathroom facilities, put both of the proms?
We'll have to work out some logistics, but I don't think it's something we can't do.
Now, what are the differences in this proposal versus the, the high school proposal?
Well, they're both high school, but the.
Oh, I mean, the seniors and the juniors.
They're very similar, and.
I have it. I mean, because that's why we, we discussed not.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Please do.
The folks at home can't hear you.
Aaron has it as well, if you want to talk on it.
Yeah, so basically, the, the differences between ours were, are mostly our budget restrictions and the dates that they'd be on. I know that in the previous meeting, it was talked about if COVID testing would be required or not in the hopes of being able to go within six feet during, like, dancing. And we would be open to that as well, but really, we're just, we're just trying to get, ours is going to be a little bit smaller scale because of, we have a smaller class than them as well as limited spending numbers. So our, our goal is to really just stay on track with what we're supposed to have our junior year and just kind of push it through and get something out so that people can enjoy a prom their junior year instead of having to cram everything like last minute.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
You're talking about funding, and obviously, your fundraising was hampered because of COVID and the different events you couldn't have. After you do your penny sale, if you're still in the hole for funding, can you come back to us and let us know?
Yeah.
Because within the community, we may be able to help you. Thank you.
Anyone else far as discussion regarding the, the juniors' prom proposal? So I'll make a motion to approve their proposal as written, and also allow staff to amend it as required.
Second.
Second by Joel. Discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Stan. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Before we jump to the next item, I would like to thank the class advisor. Mrs.?
De Toronto.
Mr. Toronto?
De Toronto.
De Toronto?
Yes.
I want to thank you for coming and assisting the students, and it's, we're appreciative of you taking your time out to do this.
It's my pleasure, and I thank you for your decision and giving us the opportunity to continue.
You're welcome. Moving along, next, we have athletic committee. This is something that was put on the agenda based upon some discussions last week, and I guess, Ruth Allen, if you want to start off, maybe we give us a little bit of history regarding this committee, how it was formed, and what its responsibilities have been over the years.
I believe it was in 2017, a committee was put together by the then athletic director as a result of some workshop, work that had been done, and I believe the committee members also attended the workshop on restorative justice. The committee was designed to work with the athletes if there was a, an issue that arose rather than just having punishment be, you're off the team and that's it, to work with the athletes and to truly make sure that it was a teachable moment if there was a problem that arose. Over time, I think some of the parameters of that committee have morphed. Currently, there is a teacher, there's another teacher who also coaches, couple of coaches, and a booster club member, booster club president, who serve on that committee along with the athletic director.
And that is Joel. So Joel, I know you sit on this committee, so I know you've been on since the creation?
Yes, yes.
If you want to give us a little bit.
Yeah, what, well, what it was, was Matt Gezokas, who was the principal at the time, and Cheryl Peabody was the ED, both of whom had been on various committees at the NHIA level. The NHIA adopted a program a couple of years prior to that called Life of an Athlete, and that program basically focused on all sorts of initiatives and things that they would like to see school districts promote when it came to athletics. Nutrition programs, training programs, the importance of school and grades, staying away from alcohol, staying away from drugs, basically just leading a healthy lifestyle, being part of the community. Community involvement is a big part of that. And so Mr. Gezokas asked for several of us to go to the training. We went to the training at the NHIA in April of 2017. A lot of it focused on restorative justice. What a lot of school districts were finding was, if a kid had made some kind of mistake and, you know, violated some kind of an athletic rule, a lot of districts were throwing them off the team, throwing the book at them, and there was no real processing of what the behavior was, and they were losing kids. A lot of kids would quit school because they couldn't play a sport. Sadly, that's what some do. So it was an effort to sort of work with athletes, help them process behaviors and learn from it. A lot of times, it had a community component, community involvement component, as well as. component, as well as sometimes some extra monitoring by teachers of schoolwork, keeping track of grades a little bit more closely with the coaches. And then Mrs. Peabody asked us to help in other ways. We helped plan some of the athletic banquets. We were kind of, to her sort of help on, on the floor. She asked for us to, to look at the handbook, see if there's any recommendations we could make to go in front of the school board for any potential changes. And then Cheryl would bring those forward to the school board level for approval. Trying to think of what else. Taking a look at the calendar, there was definitely an effort back then to start using like a Google Calendar so that you could see gym usage, like, all right, who's in the gym these nights of the week, 500, all the different things that happened in the gym, so everybody wasn't tripping over each other. That's, I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell, the things that we've, we worked with her on.
And I guess how, I know this came up during a, some of these questions, go ahead.
I missed one. We also helped with screening candidates, screening candidates for coaching positions. And in fact, when, when Ms. Vaughn was out on a short leave, and we hired the athletic director, there were some members of that committee that joined with some of the staff members here at the high school to help screen those, that position as well, the position that Mr. Larkham eventually ended up with.
I have a question. So is this a committee formed within the district, or is this a committee, or subcommittee of, or advisory committee to the school board?
I mean, I think it could go either way, Tim, you know, to be honest. I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing for it to be a committee of the school board. I don't think it necessarily has to be. But I, I don't think it's a bad idea either. It was really formed by the AD and the principal at the time to sort of bring a few of us different players into the mix. There was some, you know, a teacher from the high school, teacher from the middle school, one of our coaches who happens to be an administrator in another district, booster club involvement. At the time, Mrs. Cardinal was on the board, I2 was on the board. So she actually became more of a, of a alternate, you know, alternate. Because I had concerns about both of us sitting with a student, potentially talking about restorative justice. And then if that hadn't worked well, and things progressed, and it had to go in front of the board, you would have already had two board members sort of involved in that initial process. And I didn't think that was a great idea. So I, I'd say it was formed with the intent of being a school committee. But we have, we have worked with the ADs in the, well, the AD in the past with making recommendations that go before the board.
Now, when it talks about restorative justice, and we have, some people are staff, some people are coaches or volunteers, how do we handle that regarding student information, regarding the curriculum needs, and not violate whatever?
FERPA.
FERPA. So how do we handle that, I guess?
Well, I think what Cheryl would do, I don't think we've met with a student since Eric came on board, was she would basically talk to the parent and say, look, we have a committee of people. This is who they are, you know, would you, and the parent didn't have, the parent and the child didn't have to meet with the committee. They could opt out, just take whatever discipline, you know, was going to get handed out by an individual.
And that individual would be the athletic director in this situation?
Typically, yeah. And maybe the principal.
Who was also the dean of students.
Yeah.
So because it's a dual role at the high school, and was with Mrs. Peabody as well, that same person is the athletic director, but also handles the primary discipline for the high school. So it, it was a way to kind of separate that as well. But if it didn't go through the committee, that person was, held both hats.
We had, we've had, we really had great success with it. The girls finished their season last night as they lost in the quarterfinal round. And one of the outgoing seniors I spoke to after the game and said, wow, remember, we had that athletic committee meeting with you your freshman year and how far you've come? And she said, yeah. I mean, it was the best thing that happened to her. She, it kind of turned things around for her. And she became a great student and a great athlete for Farmington High School. So there's been a lot of success with that. I don't think, you know, with, with COVID and how it fell, it fell into, you know, partway through Eric's year, we didn't really necessarily, we haven't met with any kids since then. So.
So I know this is, this came up regarding a recent, some questions, at least from us, of understanding, well, what about this committee, its roles and responsibilities during a recent, I guess, hiring process or review process for a coach? So I guess, has this been set by policy on how we ask this, this committee where some, some are paid staff, some are volunteers, some are from other organizations, participate in this process of hiring?
At this point, everyone who's on the committee is either a coach, a teacher, or in Joel's case, is a board member slash booster club president. So there's, there's a little bit closer tie than might have been in the past where not everyone at least had, had some tie into receiving a check from the district.
Can I stop you there and ask the question?
Yeah.
The girl's season, season ended last night, right?
Yes.
So the, the coach is who? Is it Dawn?
The coach was Dawn, yeah.
Okay. So now that basketball season's over, isn't Dawn's position with the district no longer in existence because the season's over?
That would be true. It's, it's a limited contract.
Right.
And so that would be the case with the other coaches as well, whose seasons are over, I guess, if you're looking at it that way.
But is Dawn on this committee?
She is not.
Okay. I didn't think so.
Are you using that as an example?
Right.
Yeah. I will say, though, when we, when we have approved coaches, we approve them for the calendar school year.
For that particular sport?
Because, right, because the, but, for that particular sport. But within the NHIA guidelines, they allow some out-of-season contact with coaches.
For additional
So we've always approved it as a school year. Because that's why every year, I say, you know, if the AD knows who the coaches are going to be, they probably should get them to the board by July 1, because there are summer activities as well that, that are allowed.
Right. Particularly for fall.
Summer league, well, the summer league for basketball, there's, there's been lots of different, you know, to, within what the NHIA allows for out-of-season contact.
Right. Which has changed quite a bit in the last
Yep.
Four to five years.
Yep, it has. Coach has.
It used to be that prior to the start of a season, coaches were not allowed interaction with the teams because it was considered an advantage for those teams that had preseason contact with their coach. But because the way that schools were kind of getting around that, they would have what were called captains practices where, you know, the seniors, the senior students would say, okay, we're going to go run today. But that has other liability issues with kids running practice and you don't have an adult. And they decided it really made more sense to just let the adults actually oversee and make sure it's a healthy process instead of just letting kids get creative before the season started.
The coach also has to submit a, a preseason plan to the AD. There are a lot of stipulations. It has to be open to anybody. Can't be just a select group of kids. If some freshman who never played basketball in his or her life wants to participate, they can.
Yeah, it's open.
It's open, yeah. And then a lot of schools were not opening it. Or they were grabbing some dad to come in and, or mom to oversee things, and they weren't even approved by the school officials, you know, the school boards. So that's why the NHIA created some different parameters around it.
So I guess one of my questions to Ruth Allen, during the hiring process, how common is it to have outside people who don't work for the district to be participating in a hiring process or reviewing to comment to, say, the hiring authority regarding the candidates? And are we properly noticing the applicants regarding these people who may not be employees of the district? I mean, what is our requirement, I guess?
I, I don't know that there's a requirement there. I mean, it's, it's definitely the expectation and what's done once you're looking at the administrative level. Administrators typically have stakeholder groups in which, you know, before which they interview parents, community members, that sort of thing. It's not as, as typical at a coach level. But there's nothing that says that couldn't be a process. It's, but it doesn't say it has to be a process. It's local decision. The actual hiring piece is within the district. I mean, it's administrators vet their candidates, they bring to me, this is our choice with their rationale and the reasoning and a nomination sheet, and here's the, here's our reference check.
So in this case, this group, the athletic committee is advisory to the athletic director?
It would, it couldn't be more than advisory in that regard because they aren't the administrator who brings forward a nomination.
And, and really, when it comes to the hiring piece of like a varsity coach, it's, it's simply just like a level of screening. It's just to get some questions asked that maybe one individual wouldn't necessarily think to ask. We've done it with principals. We've brought in community members. In fact, I think you knew, you sat on that.
Yeah, I was.
We've done it with other, other administrative positions. And again, they're not administrative positions, but I think when Cheryl had the athletic committee, she just figured, well, we'll use them for that first round of interviews, just so that we can get sort of a broader questioning.
This is kind of an eye-opening experience for me. I've got some concerns, especially in the area of FERPA as a parent, and possible ramifications if we violate that federal statute. I'm not comfortable coming up to some type of decision on, hey, this is how we should proceed with a committee. I think as a board, we have the responsibility that if we are going to do such a committee, it's, it's done by policy. And I, I kind of want to put some thought into this versus hammering out a solution, if that makes sense. And I recommend we table it for, for two weeks and, and have somebody bring forward a policy, to put a policy before us. And it's either going to be an advisory committee of the superintendent, who has the power to hire and fire, or it's going to be an advisory committee to the board. But I think it's, I think we're treading dangerous water to create a program not run by policy.
Was there a policy put in place when this was started? By the AD and the principal at the time?
There is verbiage in the athletic handbook, which we approve. I, I'm not sure what the verbiage says now, but it is, the, the committee is talked about. I don't know if it necessarily talks about all of what its responsibilities was. It would be interesting, and I, I agree with Tim, actually, to take a further look at this, it would be interesting to talk to the NHIA, because a lot of schools are doing it, and, and find out about those concerns that Tim just expressed, you know? I mean, I would assume the NHIA probably went, has gone through this before and had to have some legal opinion on it.
Yeah, I, I think it's, were we asking people who are non-employees to be participating? We should have, we should have clear policy set down for what we expect of them, what we're going to do with what information are their participation and what guidelines we're going to have, so we cannot create situations that are problematic.
So I guess my question with that, and I don't disagree with your statement, but are we looking at developing a policy that governs the athletic committee? Or are we looking at a policy that governs all committees and stakeholder participation in any type of hiring process? Because I think you're looking at, at a larger issue because it's part of any administrator's process. That's kind of a given.
Well, what process, when we hired, a recent hiring process that I was asked to be a volunteer in, which I participated in the hiring process, how was that structured and by what policy was that governed and guided?
And again, there's not a policy, there are policies that state that if we are going to hire an administrator, we need to bring forward at least two names to the board. There needs to be, and, and I believe it was three, and then it was waived at one point because we had a shallower pool.
There is a policy for hiring administrators.
There is a policy for hiring administrators.
And it tells you what, what the pieces are to the committee, to the screening committee?
It says, who should make up that committee? What it doesn't do is necessarily give full procedure of this person does this, this person does that. Certainly, a procedure could be written. But I guess there's two parts to this. There's the development of a committee. And then if a committee is developed, does it then need to have a charter or a purpose? And these are, this is what this committee's purpose is versus the hiring process, which is a, another part. You have two pieces, both of which could be dealt within policy, and the hiring practice certainly should be. But I guess I'm, what I'm asking is, are you looking to then have a policy for the development of this or any other committee down the road? Or is this just a policy for athletic committee?
Well, I think that you certainly raise a bigger question. Because if we, if we've done this in the past, and we continue, plan to continue to do this, which makes sense in certain hiring processes, where we get outside information, outside
Input.
Info, input from other people who are non-employees of the district, then I think we'd need a policy. Because as they participate in that process, they're going to need to sign off on their responsibilities and what they're going to be held responsible for far as confidentiality regarding the process. And then we need to figure out where the line is of what we can and will disseminate to those people that are non-employees. We're going to have to have sign off by the applicants that they, that they're willing to participate in this, this process with non-employees, I assume, right? And when we did a hiring process for a principal that I was involved in, I assume that the applicants were consenting to the process? Because at that point, they were sharing their, their, their resume and their personal, to a committee of volunteers.
At the point that you apply for a position, you've handed your packet to the organization to do as they see fit. Obviously, they're not going to post it online. There is something there, but
But there is, there is a reasonable expectation of any applicant regarding
That there's some confidentiality.
Confidentiality. And once you, once you invoke other people that are not held to that confidentiality, you could be problematic unless those people are aware of their responsibilities. Go ahead.
So in that particular instance, I think, where do you want?
Take a mic.
Take a mic, yeah.
Thanks. I organized that interview. When people, when people assigned, said they would sign up to be part of that committee, they were required to sign a form that indicated that they would not share the results of information that they received from, you know, any of the information that the candidates gave. And you signed one.
Yeah.
Is it an NDA?
It's not a full nondisclosure, but it is, it is a confidentiality agreement that those, that information won't be shared and that, and nobody's going to say, oh, well, you know, if it's a closed interview, this one said this, or, you know, can you believe that this guy had that on his resume? That's, that's not allowed to go outside the room. And those packets typically also don't leave the room.
So if I'm sitting in this process as a, as a citizen, sign the nondisclosure or whatever form we want to count, what accountability do I have to the district? what accountability do I have to the district if I'm not an employee? So, how secure is that actual information?
And the agreement is actually unenforceable if they're not an employee.
Or is it?
It isn't really enforceable. You can have someone sign an NDA, it doesn't mean you're going to win in court.
I just, you know, I popped up to our policies, and I know our policies have changed within the revisions from the National School Board Association. I'm not seeing an administrative hiring policy that still exists. And again, I think, I think a lot of the questions that are being kind of asked here are, or they start with a roadmap and a policy of how we're going to proceed. Is it going to be, again, an in-school committee? And if it's an in-school committee outside of this board, then that comes under the power and duties of what the superintendent wants to delegate and what she doesn't or he doesn't. And I think we start by hashing away a policy. Does this make sense? Yeah. Okay, what are the ramifications of this? And we do what we do with any sensitive policy is we have legal take a look at it. And we cover it under FERPER by allowing this, this, and this to happen. If he says, yeah, I'm happy with it, if he says no, then I can vote for it.
Now, I, one question for you, Ruth Allen. I mean, I, when I heard Tim says it should be the subcommittee of us or subcommittee of the district. And for me, I'm like, I don't think it should be us. But if we look at the list of how many subcommittees we currently have, what is the list that we have?
Your current list is-
You mean the board subcommittees?
The board, the board subcommittees. So, you have policy committee.
Yeah.
Budget committee.
Yeah.
Building and grounds. CIP. Health and wellness. Professional development. Data governance. And the audit committee.
And what about the one that was just formed?
Loss of, loss of-
And then the learning loss.
So, that is six or seven, that would be not a point, that we've, that are, some committees not required based upon other committees, like budget committee, that's required, we need to have a representative. So, that's kind of out of the list.
Yeah, you have 10 total, CIP and budget.
Pretty much, we need to have to satisfy other board requirements. So, the other eight are other subcommittees that we formed to do various things.
I would say that if a committee is going to be involved in a hiring process and it would be doing our due diligence to make it a board committee.
I guess my question is, I mean, while it could be involved in the hiring process, does it have to be involved in the hiring process? It's not what it was originally formed for. It did become one of those duties that kind of morphed into. And we haven't hired a large number of varsity-level coaches since we've had a change of athletic directors. There've been a couple. And frankly, this year's been weird all the way around. We'll, we'll grant that part, but-
Well, yeah, I'm glad to hear that we don't have a high coach turnover rate because I know we have some good coaches and the continuity is important. Josh, I think one concern I have is if you make it a subcommittee of this board and you have an appointment of a member of this board on that committee, and they go through a hiring process and they make a recommendation, isn't that undermining the superintendent because they're the hiring authority?
That's true.
If they can make a recommendation, it doesn't mean that I have to accept the nomination.
Right, but it's also putting that person, or you're in a position where-
In a subordinate position.
Subordinate position where-
Which we don't want.
Right, which may be a concern regarding saying, you know, I'm on it and I say, I think it should be this person. And then you, because I sit on this side of the table, you're saying you potentially would feel pressured to side with my opinion because I'm one of your bosses. So, I mean, is that, it seems like that might be problematic. Because just like in this, if, yeah, just like if I was on a hiring, a subcommittee with other residents, which I was at the time, but I wasn't a board member.
Right.
You know, I'd be-
But I will say that virtually anytime we have hired an administrator, there has been at least one board member on that initial interview committee.
And a parent.
And, and parent, usually multiple parents. Often students. At least at the middle and high school levels, we don't often have elementary students on the committees, but-
Let me, let me, and I, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that anybody doesn't think that this is an important committee. I think you all think it is. But let me just stress another reason why it is, is an important committee. In the, I've been involved with the boosters now for 30 years. I started in 1991. I have worked with 24 athletic directors at this high school in 30 years, okay? It is a position that has turned over more times than you can shake a stick at. Very hard position to keep somebody for any length of time. Now, I think we've made some gains in recent years because we took that position and lumped it with an administrative position that could give it a decent salary. But because of that turnover, and I'll use Mr. Larkum for an example, and he's probably listening, and I hope he is. Mr. Larkum went through administrative training to become a school administrator, okay? And this was his first position that he was, that he got was with us. And we were very happy to bring him on board. I don't believe he necessarily went through any training to become an athletic director because there's not a whole lot of training out there. He can correct me if I'm wrong. Unless you have an athletic administrator certificate or masters, you typically don't go through any of that training. Mr. Larkum doesn't have anyone in this district that can mentor him in that part of his position because there is nobody that works for this district that has ever had that role, okay? So, and I'm not saying that it's the committee's job to mentor, but it does give you some consistency of some folks that have been here to see how certain things have gone and how certain things have worked. And I think that that committee just helps an A.D. I mean, Cheryl Peabody is the one that helped design it, and she had more administrative experience at the time that she was here than anybody, any of our administrators in the district. Yet she saw value in it, even though she had so much experience. So, I just think that that, that committee can help through the years as that turnover occurs. And I hope we don't have turnover. I hope Mr. Larkum will stay for a long time because we all like him very much. I think he's doing a very good job. That's just some thoughts.
Thank you. But back to your point, Ruth Allen, you just said that we've had administrators participate in, say, the early screening of candidates. I think that's the reason, another reason why-
We've had board members.
Right, and I think that's another reason why we need, we should have clear policy for what the roles and responsibilities, even for, because if we're going to have one of us sit on the preliminary part of a hiring process, it's important to know for us or whoever's sitting there, what their expectations and what you're there for.
But can I?
If, if that's what's in the procedure.
And I will say that it's not just here. Every district I've ever interviewed in had a, for an administrative position, had a board member in on that interview.
But I think that creates this subordinate conflict unless it's properly managed through a policy.
Because at that point, you are acting as an individual not representing the entire school board. That's why there's only one usually on there. Maybe two when there were, if I were interviewing for a school district that had a larger school board. I interviewed for one that had a board of seven. So, there were two members on the interview committee, but there were still more than, there were still five sitting over here who hadn't been on that first part of the interview.
Timmy had time.
They do. And again, it's gone in with, I really want to put some deep thought into this. But isn't, and I agree with the policy. We need a, we need a policy brought before us as a board. But here's my concern. Regardless of who's sitting in the superintendent's seat, he or she has the power to hire and fire. And that's their, that's their role under the administrative rules, which has the power of law. So, law says the number one person that has this decision-making process to bring the nomination forward is the superintendent. So, if we're going to do a policy, I think the policy is the superintendent may delegate A, B, C, D, and E. And I'd like to see that vision of how it ties into what we're doing now to potentially tighten up any loopholes that are there now that might not be the best practice. But I want some, I've seen this on the agenda tonight. I'm just, I'm not intelligent enough or I'm not feeling good enough to come to some type of conclusion tonight. And I think, I think our conclusion tonight should be, do we direct the superintendent to come back with us with a policy that we can review? We can accept it, we can reject it, we can amend it. And we've got some vision on kind of where it needs to go.
I would agree that, but I would like to see, Ruth Allen brings us back something, some broad strokes of this is how you see it working as far as a framework? Because if you have a framework of saying, okay, as Tim suggested, you're the, you're the authority that's going, ultimately going to come up to you to make the recommendation for hire. And what you may or may not delegate or ask for assistance and how you go about that is basically a framework of how you're going to have people assist you doing that. And that essence kind of is the framework of the policy that could be applied to any process throughout the district.
Okay, so let me make sure that I'm clear because we've talked about a lot of interwoven issues. So, you're asking for essentially a hiring process that, a hiring policy that outlines process and essentially a flow chart if then, if this, then this is what, if this, then this is what. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, you could call it a flow chart. I mean, Tim's thoughts are basically, you're going to get assistance in any hiring process. And that hiring, that assistance can be in many forms. It can be employees of the district, outside consultants, members of the community, or members of clubs or organizations. But how that, you know, interfaces with those different groups and organizations may be a little bit different based upon whether they're employees, what we can and can't disseminate for information to them, what, what we're going to ask them, you know, so that at each point, you know, say that we get an outside representative. Say we're looking for somebody for building and grounds. And based upon the board's experience, we go and get an outside professional to act as an advisor. Well, you know, maybe the grounds manager at Spaulding High School. You know, and how that's going to fit in and far as us following a policy regarding personal information, whether we need to sign off, make him sign an NDA. You know, a lot of this will fill in. But, you know, I think it needs to be consistent in all hiring processes. So, that, that hiring, like you said, that hiring policy is really guidance, would be guidance for everybody involved to know what their roles and responsibilities are.
Because I, certainly there are, the process for hiring, while there are pieces that are the same no matter the position, there are procedures that are very different if I'm hiring a paraprofessional than if I'm hiring an assistant superintendent.
Right, and those would be specifics for those individuals. But in general, when you back up above that-
Are you looking for a comprehensive hiring policy? Or are you looking for a general hiring policy for all positions? And then the procedural pieces for anything additional above that?
I think to start, a general one would work. And then later on, a comprehensive one may be something we look at if, if there are additional expectations we need to relay or there's any deviations from the general.
I mean, this came up recently in some other discussion a few meetings ago regarding during that review of candidates, how we, how we review their credentials and so forth. That was in some previous discussion. And I think that that also is important detail that needs to be in there. We've talked about it. And if it's not written down, we may not follow it as consistently as we like. And that may cause us problems in the future. Tim, you have time?
I think we're dealing with two, two issues. We're here, we're dealing with defining what the hiring process is. And we're also dealing with defining how we create a committee of multiple facets within the community and what their roles, responsibilities are, and what we can release and what we can't. So, I think, I think there's two issues here. It's how we form internal district committees under the superintendent's authority. And how do we incorporate outside resources in the hiring when the superintendent decides that she or he want to, want to do that? I mean, if we're going to hire a, I'll say a basketball coach, doesn't the superintendent have the authority to say, athletic director, I'm going to handle that process?
Sure.
I do, yeah.
So, so within this organization, shouldn't we allow you to delegate versus tie your hands? Because I don't think we can tie your hands, except by statute.
Right, and so, you know, for me to write, I can write a process. I think it makes sense to say you have a policy, this is the expectation, and this is who has what authority. You have a procedure that in general, this is what we're going to do, but it doesn't become the have-to, the policy is the have-to.
Right.
Right.
With then the latitude to be able to, because I may be doing it that week, but if I'm sick and I call Paul and say, I need you to take this interview for me. You know, I need to have that latitude to do it rather than have you call an emergency meeting so you can waive a policy.
No, I mean, I think there's going to be a general policy, there'll be procedures that'll follow up to have people who it's delegated to, to follow the proper steps, you know, and make sure all the documentation is correct. It's, references are correctly reviewed to the satisfaction of the district. Right down the line to who has what roles and responsibilities. I mean, the other thought I would add is, I mean, Tim brings up whether it should be a committee of us or a committee of the school district. I don't have an opinion at this point, so I guess I would be looking forward from you to say, this is the best place for it to be. And then here's the reasons why. You know, should it be a committee of this board? Like some of the other eight committees that we have, far as down to policy? I mean, you know, policy and some of the other ones you listed. Or should it be under, under the district, under, say, the athletic director? Whoever it should be. I mean, I would be looking for, say, this is where it makes sense from where you stand of where this committee is formed by, because formed and how those membership on that committee comes and goes. Because these are volunteers. How big is the committee? Who's going to be on it? How many staff people do we need? I mean, I mean, it's been formed and it's been, I don't know if there's a set, you know, two of these, three, three community members or there's kind of a-
I don't think there was ever a charter or that sort of thing that was set forth. I think it was created out of expedience and need at the time. And-
Yeah, it was, it's just like I said, an initiative that Matt Gezogus brought forward and asked some of us to be a part of, be a part of the initial training.
Right.
Can I just add, Charlie? Because you brought something up earlier that it's, I would just want to reiterate. I think one of the most important pieces when we hire anybody and when we're interviewing any position in this district, once we have that all laid out, is that we communicate that effectively to all the applicants. You've been chosen to interview. This is who you'll interview with, whether it's round one, two, three, whatever, depending on how many, you know, what, what the position is. I'm not necessarily sure that recently that's happened with one of these positions in question. And that's what maybe brought this to the forefront, okay? And sometimes that's good because now we're taking a deeper look at it. But we've got to be, every applicant- But we've got to be, every applicant has to be treated the same, has to, has to interview under, in my opinion, has to interview under the same circumstances, with the same screening committee if we have one or whatever, and we, you know, because somebody may interview, may apply for a principal's position, you say, well, we're going to have a member of our budget committee on board, and we're going to have a parent, that person may say, no, no thanks, I don't want to go through an interview that, that's that intense. I mean, I guess they have that option, most people embrace it, I think, I think a lot of candidates embrace it. I know a lot, we've got a lot of feedback, great feedback from candidates who love seeing a student as part of the process, you know? But it just has to be communicated well.
I think having all the stakeholders at the table during the hiring process like that also conveys what we want to the candidate, right? So when, when folks get hired, they have a clear understanding of what the district expects from them when they take a position.
Yep.
That's, that's another part of that.
So really, you're looking at two policies. You're looking at a policy in regard to hiring, and you're looking at a policy in, three. Policy in regard to hiring, a policy in regard to the formation of committees, and a policy in regard to using stakeholders who are not employees as part of processes that may involve district or employee information and how that's disseminated. So really, it's three pieces that you're looking for me to bring forward.
But the third piece can be incorporated into a committee, so if you hire, and we use a position assistant superintendent because we don't have one, I don't, I don't want to insult somebody. But if you formulate a committee to, within that, within a committee formation policy, you should have latitude to define what can and can't be released to that committee based on what the confidentiality needs are, if that makes sense. So, so yeah, you have three concepts, but I think that can be basically absorbed into two policies. And, and I'm sure, you know, New Hampshire School Boards Association or another district, somebody's dealt with this in the past that we can look at it as a starting, you know, starting roadmap. You know, I appreciate everything the athletic committee has done in the past, I think athletics is important in our district. And it's like anything, when we take a look at something, it, in my mind, can only get better. And I'd like to see it, I'm a visual person, I'd like to see it on paper, and that's going to help us with the discussion moving forward, I think. So with that, I'll make a motion to table till next week's reorganization, and, and so I'd make a motion to table for two weeks.
Are we meeting on the 22nd, or is our next one after that, the 29th? I know there've been some discussion back and forth.
Well, what's our regular meetings would be?
After the 15th, that would, it would be April. But, you know, but we had already said we were meeting on the 29th, so.
We already said we were meeting on the 29th?
We did.
You had mentioned that, yes, but we can certainly move that as well.
We're meeting the 15th.
Yes.
Is there any reason to meet on the 22nd?
Yes.
Should be following.
Yes.
What would that be, besides this?
As we move forward into the agenda, we're going to talk about learning loss. I don't have a written report for the board, I know the superintendent's going to bring forward at least one proposal, I own a time for the weekend. What I'd like to block off is a half hour, 45 minute period of time that we can discuss with the board what some of the recommendations are, and potentially start an approval process of the board.
Okay, so how will we back up?
On the 22nd?
How will we back up? How will we table, I'll make a friendly amendment, a motion, that we table?
Athletics.
This discussion regarding.
The athletic committee, not that's why I'm.
And subsequent discussion until a later meeting when Ruth Ellen is able to present.
I'll, I'll accept that.
Because depending on when we have meetings and what goes on, you may not be ready till the 29th of March. So this gives you the opportunity to get, get it done and say, hey, it's ready to be on the agenda, basically.
Okay, all right, so.
Could be a meeting or a workshop.
That's another good question, are we looking at a meeting or a workshop? Although if you're going to bring forward recommendations.
I don't think it needs to be that specific, because it's up to you to say you've got it ready to bring forward, and then we'll put it on the next readily available meeting.
So make it a workshop.
It could be a workshop.
Let me back up again, are we talking about the policies, or are we talking about the recommendations of the learning loss committee now?
Policies.
Okay, all right, because I think.
That's why.
I think Tim was talking about.
Because Tim made a motion, and then he talked about why he wanted to potentially have it the 22nd, or meeting the 22nd. But that's why I wanted to back up to his motion, which is to table the policy discussion.
Okay.
And I made a friendly amendment to, to the next.
Table policy until it's ready to go.
Yeah, and you accepted that.
I did.
So I'll make, I'll second that, then.
Okay.
Just quick discussion, yeah, just with the idea that this isn't going to sit on the back burner for six months. It's an important topic, but I just.
How about no later than?
No later than first meeting in March, April.
April 5th?
Right.
Well, I'll accept that.
Allen, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Stan?
Stan? Okay.
Okay. Now, next we have on our agenda is CAP use of the building.
Yes.
And this is regarding the vaccination?
Yes, and, so.
So let me start, I sent everybody an email regarding, Ruth Ellen reaching out to me regarding some potential availability to get some staff vaccinated here and use the facilities, which I said, please proceed.
Right.
That you'd be discussing it tonight.
Yep, so we'll start with that piece.
We actually gave her that direction way back in the beginning of COVID, that if we could have a, the board said, if we could have a clinic here, we'd like to see one here.
Right, and, and when I had the initial conversation, when I was approached by Public Health Network, Stratford Community Action Partnership is our, our liaison, I said, I'm confident that the board is going to say, figure out a way to make this happen. I, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, I had that confidence that I could go forth and say, okay, let's talk about this. So I received a call that said, and we weren't able to get it working for this weekend, but two pieces, with the governor moving pieces up, but also wanting to make sure that staff members are able to be vaccinated as quickly as possible. But also, in northern Stratford County, they've had a very difficult time finding a venue where they can vaccinate or do a scheduled clinic for people who are 65 and older as well. And I said, well, nobody's called me, so now that you've called me, I'm pretty confident the answer's going to be yes, let's figure out how to do this. So we're looking, one, to put together a scheduled clinic where people can call in, make the appointment, know that they're coming, and what day that's going to be. The other piece is that oftentimes on a Friday afternoon, they find out, we have 150 doses left over, we've got to get in an arm before 3 o'clock tomorrow, and I'll get a phone call, put out an alert to the staff, and say, I have this many slots, and we're looking to do this in conjunction with Newt as well. So I have this many slots, here's your sign up, the times don't mean a whole lot, it'll be from this time to this time. I can't guarantee you that it's, you know, if your time slot says 2:15, that it's going to be 2:15, it'll be, you know, the next one in line. But just put in your name until the slots are gone, if the slots are gone, we'll try to catch you next weekend. But get that done. And so I'm looking to use Valley View's multipurpose room, because I can have people go in one door and out the other, one-way traffic. There's parking, and it's not too far to walk if we end up doing some overflow down to the high school, but I don't anticipate that that will be the case. And then today, the commissioner had his call on, well, we've moved up 2A, and that's going to run faster as well. So we have kind of two pieces happening in conjunction with one another. They'll be officially opening up for people to schedule who are part of the 2A group, which is K-12 staff members in whatever capacity. So that would include custodians and bus drivers and food service, and he goes in the administrative offices, anybody who's in a building with kids, it also includes daycares, both licensed and under special dispensation from the state. It would include the rec program, if that were still running, community programs that deal with kids. And so basically, you know, I've told Public Health, let me know, we'll figure it out, let's, let's make this available for the area. I'm happy to be able to be a hub for that. I've offered, you know, I said, I'm key holder, I can open it up, tell me when, we'll figure it out. So we're still going to be meeting, meeting with Public Health tomorrow, I want to say 10:30, to figure out the scheduled portion and the kind of on-call portion, both. We may end up running some of them in tandem, and in hope, in hopes that we are able to get folks from this region done a little bit more quickly. It also would include, even if I have staff members who live out of state, most of them are on the main side, we do have a few that come up from Massachusetts, because they work in New Hampshire with New Hampshire students, they are also eligible to be vaccinated here with us. So we're.
So I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So if we're going to host this event at the multipurpose room, who is providing the staff?
For the vaccinations?
Vaccinations.
Public Health Network.
And are they also providing emergency medical people if there's a reaction?
Yes.
So even if we have a spur of the moment, hey, we have 100 doses, do you have a list of people? They're going to be providing the people administrating.
Yes.
And the necessary medical professionals, if somebody has an allergic reaction or just faints from getting stuck with a needle.
Right, that, yes, and part of, Chief Linnott, as the local EMS manager, will also be part of our discussion tomorrow as well. So, yes, and they're also pulling in the locals so that there is a, an understanding across all of those who may be tapped as resources here, so that we're, we've got all the bases covered.
Because if we were to have somebody that were to have an allergic reaction, they may need to be transported.
Right, right.
So either they're going to be providing that transportation ready and waiting, or we, our fire department or ambulance service would have to be on call to provide that.
Correct.
So hopefully, that'll be addressed.
Yep, no, he will be part of that meeting, he's already, he's on the, he's put on the.
Right, but hopefully, they are providing it, because if we have to rely on our town resources, he needs to be confident he can provide that, and still provide the service to the community.
Correct, correct.
Anyone else?
Just, I'm assuming you're going to incorporate Larry into the conversations on the scheduling for.
Oh, we have, yes.
I'm, I'm good with it, I think, I think the school, you know, our high school is the emergency evacuation center. I think we have a, you know, a duty to the, to the community, these are their buildings, let's use them for the betterment of the community. So with that, with that, I'll make a motion to allow the superintendent to work with the Stratford County Public Health officials in New Hampshire, DHHS, providing whatever services we can provide for the vaccination program.
Second.
Second by Josh, discussion? Not hearing any Allen favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other portion of the conversation that I had today with Stratford County Community Action is to look at part of our summer programming. One of the barriers that we have had for families taking part in our academics, whether it's through, for ESY, whether it's the Title I, whether it's general education, summer school, is that if students are getting done at, say, 11:30 or 12 o'clock, mom or dad has to leave work to come and get them. But if, and CAP has run programs here in the summer, looking that if we are able to combine that programming so that if a student leaves us at noon time or at 2 o'clock, CAP can then fill in the gap for families between 2 and 5. They already have other programs that may be running on site for students who aren't taking part in the academic pieces. Because we have families who need summer programming, and right now, we have a loss not only of what we weren't able to run last year, but we don't have the rec right now up and running either. And so to be able to provide that service to families that's fairly seamless and removes a barrier from them so that their students can participate if there's been learning loss, if there's that need for additional academics this summer.
Now, one thing you said is that they were, they're currently going to be onsite here for some of their programs?
No, this is, this is, we have done it in the past, and I would like to provide that again so that we can mesh some of that programming to make it available for families.
So these services, or these, some of these summer services they were providing at the daycare, or?
The year, not this past summer when the world was sideways, but the summer before that, CAP ran our summer programming. They ran programs on campus for students that were roughly 8 to 5 or so, for families that needed childcare. They ran like a summer camp.
Okay, but when you said you, they ran our programs.
Well, okay, we had had a program, FAMI ended, they came in and picked up, ran a program. They did both after-school and summer programming here with our students, and that's what we're looking to.
So what is our contribution to this program far as its, its structure and its, its goals, or what we're trying to accomplish?
Our contribution to this program, number one, is facility.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, we have staff who maybe work for us during the school day and work for them in the after-school program. Oftentimes, it's our paraprofessionals. And what it does is it provides an additional support for students. My interaction with them has been very collegial. We've been able to sit down and say, here's what we need here, here's what we're looking for, here's some suggestions that we have, they've been very well received. As far as designing a specific program for the summer part, I wasn't part of that, because I wasn't here for that portion, I know that Diana was here for that. But I know that the after-school program that we had before things went a little sideways, there was communication back and forth with pairs who were working with students during the school day to be the same ones, come and say, okay, I know that this is what you need to work on, because I saw you two classes ago. Let's work on this during homework time to make sure that there's, there was some, some advantage there because you have a more seamless transition. There was not a full disclosure, they don't have access to Power School, they're not looking at student grades, they're not looking at those pieces, but there is a homework component that they can be working on things. There's also time just for them to not necessarily be completely immersed in academics, but to play after-school too, because that's really important. But it gives families that safe place for kids that is really needed in this community. And so it's a program that has worked very well for us. I think we're also, I know that we are also looking at providing after-school programming that is academic in nature, and we're looking to institute busing for that. That wouldn't be so much for the CAP program as it would be for our academic tutoring. And then if we had students who were doing summer programming with us, who were able to go home to an adult during the day, that we would have busing to take them home.
But what you've just thrown at me is, that's the school program, summer programs, and, you know, we talked about the vaccines, so I guess, kind of CAP use of the building, what, oh, this is referring to the summer?
We're looking at summer at this point. They did ask if there was a possibility of a limited group of students coming in during April vacation, and I said, at this point. April vacation, and I said, at this point, I don't know, the building is not open without board vote, and we haven't voted on summer either. This is going to be kind of a larger proposal that will be coming from that learning loss committee. But I, I wanted to let you know that this is also a larger conversation around use of the buildings, and I know that we need to take it slowly as we're looking at buildings slowly opening up. I'm not suggesting that we should blow the doors open, completely mess cohorts up, and just throw kids together. But I also know that we have a need in the community, particularly moving into the summer, for families to have a safe place.
I definitely agree with that, but, uh, this is going to have to fill in a lot of details.
Understood.
A lot of details are going to have to get filled in before. I feel comfortable proceeding and, and not giving people the keys to the building with no expectations of what's going to get accomplished, far as our students, our education, you know, the whole bit.
Oh, some, the, the academic summer program we run, they would be doing kind of a camp thing that our kids would go to afterwards.
But it's going to be here.
But it would potentially be here, with, with board...
Right.
...permission, obviously.
So, it's kind of like, okay, this is what we're doing, and this is what we're, we're planning for the summer, and this is how it's going to interface with what they would like to do here, and, and that's kind of what, uh, we talk about, but hopefully, we have something on paper that, that we can review.
We had initial discussion today. We're not there yet, but obviously, before anything is signed, there's a lot of details that need to be worked out. This is, this is a couple reams of paper, Charlie.
Yep. Well, I just want to make sure that we, at least I have all the information before we consent to, yeah, just, go ahead. Especially when we have other things coming from, that we're going to try to call up as far as the learning loss, Tim.
So, we, we approved the use of the facility for the, for the clinics. Can we get a time period on, with CAP, um, on the communications of whatever programs are potentially going to enter, what is their time, what are they looking for, for time dates to accomplish their decisions, so that when I...
If they were going to offer a limited program, and they would be looking at a, a smaller number of kids, potentially at Valley View, Valley View Age Group, if they were going to do something during April vacation, they would need to get that out to families. I would say by the end of March at the absolute latest, that that was going to be available. If it's not available, and, and I've made no promises, I said, well, we'll put it as a, we need to think about it, and I said, you're not going to have a decision tonight. For summer programming, we really need to get started on that. We will need to have at least broad scaffolding in place, probably by the end of April, so that that information can start getting out to families, and we can be looking at hiring for summer and building out the full program. And we can, we can give you broad strokes. I need to understand the level of detail that the board is going to need to make an approval. Are you going to want to see every piece of an academic program? Are you going to want to see the, um, all of the activities that CAP may be running? Or are you going to want to see things that are more along the lines of, here's the parameters of building use that they have, here's the goal of what they're looking to do with kids, and here's how the two programs intersect? And I'm not expecting an answer to that right now.
Well, I, I would say the, the last one is the minimum, and when they supply that, the sooner the better, then we will, may ask additional questions regarding where we feel we need to, because depending on their proposal, it may be cloudy in this area, and we want clarifications, it may be clear enough what they propose.
Okay.
Um, you know, Betsy Ann and I have worked together, um, and she should be, uh, expecting that I'm going to want to see a certain level of detail that I feel comfortable saying yes.
Understood.
And a clear, concise proposal, um, right out of the gate is going to go a long way. About this is what they're, you know, far as the interaction, what they're providing to who, the number of kids, facilities faced required, you know? A bunch of this isn't going to do it.
Understood, but, you know, today was the initial conversation between the director here in Farmington and myself, and I met her new supervisor, just kind of saying, okay, what are we looking at, what are you thinking, what's possible, and how do I start laying some groundwork with the board? Because right now, nothing happens without a board vote, and they understand that. So...
Her, her, her original presentation to us, when we decided to go that route, was very detailed, actually. She had a team of people here with her, and it was pretty detailed.
Yep.
And I'm sure she knows, if you're the chair now, she'll really be prepared, if you've worked with her.
Yeah.
You know, really, you know, she probably knows what you expect.
Well, you know, Betsy Andrews-Parker is, is a couple tiers up from the director here in town.
But she, but she came too, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we worked with those when I was on the board, regarding, you know, the daycare, the, the upgrades that they got, did, that were, they got through grant funding. I mean, it's, that was in the details, and I'm all for supporting them, but, um, we're going to have clear ground rules, expectations, before we start giving them the keys to the building.
Well, understood, and...
And assisting them with our staff.
Right.
Because that's what we, in essence, we're all in for a common good.
But if they hire, if they are using people who work for us during the school year, during the summer, it becomes their staff.
Right.
As far as...
But as far as to pull this off, we have, have to have a consolidated effort, our staff assisting in the effort, and...
Right. And, and I did talk to them about, it may involve some flexibility because of other projects that we need to accomplish this summer with the buildings. It may mean that for these two weeks here at Valley View, it may mean the next two weeks, we're moving you down here to the cafeteria so that we can get something done there, and then we may swap you back. So, um, they understand that there may have to be some, some movement as well.
And based upon what we, uh...
We have a lot to do.
Would like to do regarding some of the students that need some additional, uh, time, that we may be able to interface that into this effort.
Right, and, and, and our, our academic programming takes precedence, not a question. What this may do is help us to allow more families to say yes to, if they have that other option to finish out the school day. That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
If, if a parent's working till, till 5 o'clock at night, and our, um, summer school program concludes at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, that transportation issue, or that young child supervision now became, may became, become an issue of whether the parent's going to send that child to summer school. If we incorporate the balance between our summer academics for the learning loss and couple it with availability of daycare after, so maybe to go in at 5, we're hoping that we're going to have a better success rate in our summer academics, um, is, is the, the gist of the brief conversation that the learning loss committee has had, and that's going to go a couple steps further through the planning as we have more data coming in, so...
Okay. So, I guess you're going to be back to us for more information?
Yes, I'm not looking for a vote on that tonight, that was just a...
Good. So, you're going to think, you're going to be back?
Needing to make sure, I needed to plant, plant some seeds.
You think you're going to be back at the next meeting with some more information on the meeting after?
I don't know if I will have that many details for the 15th. I may be able to give you a little bit more with a more solid proposal for the 22nd, if the 22nd is indeed one more meeting.
Okay. Thanks. Um, next, under new business, we did have a memo from Brian, just Narrows, regarding the school bus purchase.
Actually, it's kind of old business, because you'd asked us to bring it back to you.
Ah, well, it's new to me.
Okay.
Go ahead. Before we get onto the other ones.
Well, we were talking before about getting a couple of school buses. I know it's been a discussion, and, so I reached out to Cressy, our, our preferred vendor, who's been supplying us with buses, and, right now, they are hard to come by, because demand's not too high right now, but it will be as soon as these elections happen tomorrow, because that's when their people's budgets get approved, and if they can buy buses, they start putting out POs to reserve them. Um, but we also have social distancing guidelines that we're having a hard time maintaining on the buses. So, before those social distancing guidelines get shortened, I guess, I don't know if the proper term is shortened, but...
Reduced?
Yeah.
Aggrandized.
I think we, um, should probably take advantage of that timeframe before the governor starts changing those, or DHHS starts changing, changing those, but I also was able to get Cressy to put two on reserve for us, in the event you do decide to purchase one. They have them ready to go, they have the cameras that we need, and they have the door locks that we need.
Okay.
Um, and it's, from what I understand, I'm pretty 90% confident that these will be covered under, um, our next S R 2 grant.
Okay, so, when you say that our preferred vendor, um, what they've offered us is a school bus, and the manufacturer was...
Thomas.
Thomas. Okay, how many of those do we currently have?
I believe the majority of our fleet is Thomas, I don't believe they all are, um, and I can text and find out.
Um, we, we, I know we currently had some that I believe were on international chassis, and/or were those Thomas buses? Because this bus that was proposed to us was on a Freightliner chassis with a Cummings turbo diesel. So, I guess, my question is, how many buses do we have in the same configuration, Freightliner chassis, Cummings turbo diesel?
Um...
That we could have a comfort and security that this is a solid platform? I believe it is, but...
Yeah.
How many have we purchased from them?
We've purchased several buses from Cressy. To be perfectly honest with you, it's not always the same thing that's available at the point that we need a bus. And oftentimes, it has been, okay, what can we get? We haven't always gone with, we want to upgrade this chassis or that chassis. It's, I need a bus that seats this many kids, that has this, this, and this, find me a bus.
Okay. But, but when we're talking in a fleet of vehicles, how many vehicles do we have in a bus fleet? That are full-bone buses, for the full-size?
Uh, right now, we have, I believe, seven that are full-size buses.
Including the spares?
Um, that includes the spares, one of which is, is pretty much parts sitting on wheels.
So, I mean, that's getting to my reason of the question, because, you know, if we have a mish, you know, a mishmash of platforms that we've purchased over the, I know we have some international chassis, and that we've had them serviced at DePreezio's. Typically, I don't know if they're servicing this...
Pretty much, DePreezio services our fleet, period.
Okay. But depending on what we have, is this, is this new platform, far as chassis and engine, or this is what we've been buying? And it doesn't sound like you can answer that question.
I can't answer that for you right now, Charlie.
I mean, I went through the spec, uh, I was glad to see that it was Freightliner with Cummings, because of the consistency and the amount of market share that they have, I think that that would be a reliable platform. I know in the past, we've used some international...
The last five were all Thomas.
Right.
But I'm not sure what the chassis are, we'll see if that comes forward.
Yeah, I mean, some of the ones that we're having issues with, I believe, are on some older international platforms, that we may have issues with, whether it's electronics or whatever, um, so I'm comfortable with the platform, um, you know, but I was curious to see what we already have in our fleet. Any other discussion or questions?
I just want to put out there that, um, and we'll get into it under learning loss, but this is brought forward to the learning loss, as is this a priority of the committee to move forward and, and recommend that the, the board take action on purchasing two buses? And the unanimous consensus was yes, it's a, it's a void we need to fill. I've got a question on Brian. Brian, do you know from, do you know when the last time we, we purchased a bus, and do you know what that cost was?
We purchased two buses...
When I say they were about, what, 82,000?
Two years ago.
82,000 back then, a piece?
Roughly 80, 82 to 83 a piece.
There's a lot of extra, like the, the lettering and different stuff like that that's included in this spec, do you know if that was included in the last one?
Usually, that's the way they're delivered.
Okay.
So, I know we always require the locks, um, and the camera, and the video system, I don't know if we retrofitted the old ones, or if we...
I think we retrofitted them, just remember correctly.
With the locks, we ended up retrofitting, because they arrived and we said, where are the locks?
Yeah.
The cameras were ordered as part of that piece, and we've done, they've done our cameras for us with the other buses, the, the four that I've been involved with.
Are those cameras audio or video?
Just video.
Just video.
And again, the benefit here is if we use the, the federal funding, we don't, we still get to keep our money in the CRF, the buses, for future...
What a good idea, what should I thought?
Oh, let me ask you a question. S R 2 is, is reimbursable money, so in order for us to buy two buses, we're going to have to find 174,832. Where, where do you intend on finding that?
Right now, it'd be out of the general fund, we get reimbursed, as soon as the fund, as soon as I put in for the month, for the fund.
And the reimbursement runs...
By, by June 30th?
Oh, easily, absolutely.
Yes.
So, we'd have that checked back in by June 30th?
Oh, easily.
Usually within 30 days, less than 30 days.
All right, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
They've been, on the S R grants, they've actually been usually within 10 days, 10 days, as I submit.
Is, is filing under the S R 2 even started?
We can't file under S R 2 yet. We can, we can do a PO, um...
But how are we going to get reimbursed if we can't file?
S R allows us to be reimbursed up until, prior to, is it March?
I want to say it's back to last March, S R 2, maybe back to January, but it's at least back in our rearview mirror now.
So, will we be applying this under S R 1 or S R 2?
2.
2.
It's not allowed under 1. It would be allowed under 2. Well, actually, it, it might fall under 1 because of social distancing.
But we don't have enough to put all of it on?
We don't have enough to, to buy two buses under S R 1. We could start that process, but it won't cover both of them. Well, we'd be close.
Yeah.
It'd be really close.
So, we're going to apply under S R 2, and it's going to be open to apply, and we're going to be reimbursed by June 30th?
Easily, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, we can, what we could do is even do, at this point, S R 1, up to the point that it will cover this.
Well, if, if we motioned tonight to approve this, and we put these on order, I assume that we would not have to take delivery instantaneously, so...
Correct.
Correct.
That would give us a little bit of...
Money could come out of S R 1...
And, and I made, I made that clear when I spoke to them, like, it's pending, it's dependent on when the funds are available to us, so...
But even if they were a combination of S R 1 and general fund to begin with, and then, I mean, it's all general fund to start with, but S R 1 could be reimbursed more quickly, and then the other part coming from.
So, Brian, looking at the, the spec sheet that you provided in the folder, one of the bid price looked like it was like a general bid price, or general spec, or something to that nature. I'm assuming that if we authorize you with a, um, or if we authorize the superintendent to go forward, that you're still going to work your magic with this price?
Uh, it depends which one you're looking at, because the one I put up, he got back to me at around 5 this afternoon with the final price.
Okay.
Which is, which is what I put in.
Which I think, I think I looked at...
Yeah, the 87,416.
Yeah.
That includes the two things that we require, which are the video cameras and the locks. And includes lettering as well.
Now, the other thing that I...
End seeds.
...originally, that maybe not was up there right away, was a couple of the other options. a couple of the other options, the onboard HEPA filter.
Yeah, there is, that's an option. They just started doing that. That's an option, want to do that as well. I didn't know if that was, I mean, it's, they say the noise level of it is about the same as a regular heater, which is not...
Quiet?
But it's also the where they put it is right behind the driver's seat, so I don't know how annoying that would be to a driver, to driving a bus with that noise, because usually I think the heater's in the back, isn't it?
It typically is. What it, what it would do, it would provide a lot of white noise for the driver, which might actually be a relief, but it would also prevent some of the discerning of noises in the back of the bus.
So you weren't recommending those to us at this point?
It says 70 decibels.
That's loud.
That's not quiet.
It is not quiet.
Right. I put in there more for informational purposes, in case you guys have a fascination with it and you want to jump on it.
I mean, my, my only comment is, looking at the quote, it says price 87,416 each delivered. It's a customer quotation, it's, it's not a bid. I think there's probably some room for you to use your, your, your social skills and your drive and to get that down a little bit. Kind of authorize the price, that's what the board wants to do, but I think, I think the direction to you is, is, you know, work your magic on the number.
So you're killing me here, Mike.
Now, the other thing is, I think we have to personally waive our bid policy.
We do.
And then, for certain reasons, and then to proceed, did you get any additional information from our bus coordinator on the platforms that they're on?
The last five were all Thomas. I don't know that she has the chassis specs with her at home at this point.
Yeah, whether it's on Freightliner or international. Okay.
So there's, just a quick comment. There's, there's two ways on the purchasing. We can waive bid, or we can motion to use the federal requirements of purchasing on the E S R money.
The federal procurement.
And the federal procurement, I believe, is up to quarter of a million dollars before we have to go to bid. I just wanted to put that out.
Yeah, it probably would make sense to use that, because those other funds are looking to reimbursement. So if we follow this system, it will...
I mean, and you could do both. You could say, we're going to waive our policy and follow.
Based upon the...
Then you're covered in all directions, coming and going.
Motion to waive the policy and follow the S R 2 funding guidelines.
A second. Discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of two buses up to 174,832.
Second.
Giving Brian discretion to see what he can get them to sharpen their pencil. Any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Think it's a good thing we'll get them before they're all gone.
It's a goal.
Which might be a tough point in negotiation, but we'll see. You know, Brian.
I'm betting on Brian.
Well, I will start the side bets after the meeting.
That's not a thoroughbred horse you're betting on, so...
[laughing]
No, but I read your book.
Which book was that?
It's an old hobby of mine.
Ah. So, moving on to, do you have any other new business to go?
I have one that I'm bringing up, just as informational, and I will be giving you specifics at the next meeting. We have a donation of a banner, which falls under the amount that I can accept on behalf of the district, but we have a banner that is being anonymously donated. There was a boys' middle school basketball team that won a state level tournament back in 2004, '05. That banner disappeared at some point during painting and renovations, and we have an individual who's come forward to replace that banner. So that's being donated.
What is the value of that?
The value of that is roughly $175.
Good. I assume we'll be thanking this individual?
Absolutely, yes. And we hope to be in receipt of that. We'll definitely let the board know, and we'll do some curling and all that good stuff. The other piece that we had was looking for a date based on what the board is looking for, for an audit presentation from our auditors. Now that it appears we have the 15th, the 22nd, 29th, and the 5th, do you have a preference of a couple of dates that we can give to them to see when they would be able to come in and present that to you?
Did you have any thoughts of which one? I mean, next meeting, we have reord...
Next meeting is probably a little soon.
Right. 22nd, if we're meeting, what about our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is the 5th?
The next regularly scheduled meeting is the 5th. That's also the same night that we'll be doing nominations, but it's not, I mean, it's doable.
But those are in non-public?
Those are in non-public. I'm just looking at length of meeting, not necessarily length of public.
Well, you think they want to do it after that?
How quickly would you like this done? I guess that's, that's my question, and then we need to look to see what...
Are there any issues in the audit? I mean, do we have a draft audit that we can...
I got a draft, but it's, it's, there's no issue, there's no corrective actions or anything like that.
I mean, I would put it the week after the 5th or two, whatever our meet, next meeting is after the, the 5th of April.
Okay, do you want it to be first and third, or are we looking at every week?
Well, I mean, at this point, it's the 5th, it's not going to be the 5th, it would be the 19th, or if we have a meeting in between there. So I'd say the 19th.
Let's go vacation?
Is it?
I don't, I don't know where.
19, no, 9, the 18th, it goes, oh, I'm looking at next year, sorry. So it'd be the, the 5th, the 12th, the 19th, and then the week after is vacation.
Right, so the 19th would be our next regularly scheduled meeting after the 5th. So why don't we do that?
See if they're available the 19th? Okay.
Moving to old business, we have calendar approval?
Yes.
I guess, is that in our packet?
It is, it was put up later because we thought it was there and it wasn't, and I apologize for that, and we can push this back to next week if you'd like.
We'll open up a discussion, I guess.
The differences on here, we had discussed the professional development days. Those have been moved to, to additional professional development days on the 26th and 27th of August. Those are paid days that are optional for staff. And then I have added, under new staff orientation, we've moved that back. It had been scheduled from the last one you'd seen on the 27th, moved that back to the 23rd and 24th to give time for additional information to new staff for that orientation. And then the day in between is not a paid day, but it would give teachers an opportunity to get into their rooms to kind of start getting things settled before they get into professional development.
Questions, comments?
And the change in the vacation, correct?
Yes, and the change in vacation, Governor Wentworth did vote to go to the later vacation day, the later vacation week.
Can you reiterate the reasoning for the move of that week?
The DOE changed its recommendation for that week. Typically, New Hampshire makes sure that its vacation week does not fall at the same time as that of Maine and Massachusetts, and they discovered that their week coincided, and they moved it.
And Governor Wentworth, which is where we're partnering up with for...
For vocational.
Vocational, they are going to have...
They have approved moving the week back into, it's the last day of February, the first week of March.
Which is what this calendar represents.
Which is what this calendar reflects now.
So this is consistent with Governor Wentworth?
Yes, it is.
So for vocational students, they would not have a issue with us being open, them being closed, for vocational?
Right, because it, for a full week, we do have some days that run, like today was a professional, was a parent conference day, Governor Wentworth was in session, but our students are excused. But when we look at having a full week in vocational programs, that's a long time for kids to be out of sync. And if they come to school when we're open and then go to school when they're open, they don't get a vacation week.
So what you said today was, so we had staff development?
We had, we had parent conferences.
Parent conferences, teach parent conferences. But Governor Wentworth was running their program?
Correct.
So our students weren't able to go to that program?
Our students were not, we weren't running because we weren't open. Our students could have gone up, but they were not expected to be part of, because our district was not in session that day. Typically, when schools have an area agreement with a vocational center, we try to make sure there are no more than five days that are not in common, so that our students are not playing catch-up.
But is that best for the students, or should we have been providing transportation for those students that wanted to go to voc?
We haven't in the past, certainly we can.
I think the, I'm speaking as a parent. I think the confusing thing is, is there was an expectation from Governor Wentworth placed on the students, and there was no communication from our district on what the expectation was on students. So we had...
Say it again.
There was, there was no communication with our, our district to students or parents that they weren't expected to go to school today. So I sat out in the parking lot with my daughter at whatever time it was for the bus normally to run, and the expectation that's coming out of Governor Wentworth is, yeah, you're closed, but we're still going to have class tomorrow, so you can come to school. So there's, between both organizations, there's miscommunication, and I think in the, in the future, it would be best to, to have cleared up. As far as the calendar goes...
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
So today, what were our bus drivers doing? So is it a day off without pay, a day with pay, and they were given other tasks? Were they, you know, were they...
It's a day that they're not scheduled to work, so it's, it's not a paid day for them.
Okay, so today...
With the exception of, we did have a few students for out-of-district placement who did go.
So typically, today, the bus drivers who would normally be working, if it wasn't parent teaching conference, didn't work.
Correct.
And our students that were going to Wentworth could not go, by busing?
There were not buses running up to Governor Wentworth today. We also, because students were not in session, we did not do meals deliveries today, because we can't do meals for days that kids aren't here. We can do, because we weren't running classes.
Right.
So meals deliveries will go out tomorrow for what would have been for tomorrow, and then we'll resume normally Wednesday, moving forward.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
I just, you know, I, I agree with what you added in on the, the extracurricular voluntary training for the teachers. We discussed that. I'm just not sold on moving our vacation.
What the problem is, I'm not sold either, but if Governor Wentworth has moved their vacation, if we were to stick to our guns and have the last month, then we're going to have a mismatch, and how many students do we have going to Governor Wentworth?
Roughly 20-ish.
So we're going to take 20 students and screw up their schedule, because we want to...
When you say mess up their schedule, in what way?
And it's not us messing up their schedule, the state is messing up their schedule for schedule.
Granted, and there are...
The state is messing up the schedule, Governor Wentworth is going with it.
Right.
There are districts that have said, no, we're not changing our days.
Right, but right now, we're partnering with Governor Wentworth.
Right.
So if we say we're going to have it to last month, if, if our students, they're going to basically miss a week...
They will either miss...
If they get everyone a vacation, and then they're going to miss that first week at Governor Wentworth, because they're on vacation.
Either miss, well...
Either miss that vacation or miss a week or...
I mean, they will, if they miss while Governor Wentworth is in to take vacation, right, they're playing catch-up there. If they take Governor Wentworth's vacation, then they're playing catch-up with their regular classes here. Or they go to school both weeks and get no break.
So, yeah, that, that's the disconnect, and I, I, I don't agree with the state's decision, but I don't see what's the upside for our students that are going to be affected. There is no upside, there's a downside. If we don't stay consistent with what Governor Wentworth has done, it affects those students in that segment, just like they did today, which I think we need to ensure that these students are putting in the extra effort in participating into these programs. They sign up for them, my daughter did it, they, they spend more time on a bus, they have more, more requirements put on them than the standard student, because they want to advance themselves, so typically, they want to be there, because we're sure that they're going to meet their goal, so that's why I'm...
Well, can I put a muck wrench into that?
Go ahead.
What about the parents that are on timeshares, that every school vacation, they go to Florida or Myrtle Beach or whatever, how's the, how's that financial impact impacting them?
It's not going to render into my decision, because that's not what we're here for, the child's education. So if the parent's got a timeshare in Florida, and he can't go because there's a vacation, that's not my concern, it's the child's education.
I think, I think before we make the decision on the calendar, and I don't think we have to make it immediately, I'd like to hear from the parents. Can we do a survey?
What's, what's the question going to be on the survey?
What should you prefer on vacation, moving it or keeping it? I mean, I got a hard time moving a school vacation, so that the governors, families, skiing business can succeed. And you can quote me on that, I'm WMUR, but that's what it boils down to.
Well...
And I'm disappointed that Governor, I'm disappointed that our vocational school did it.
Well, I'm also disappointed too, but I, I don't like to disconnect for our students who are in that, who are in, in the, I guess, in the bubble.
Can I add one other thought?
Go ahead, Joe.
And you may have mentioned this in your initial discussion, if you did, but the idea of keeping that parent conference day the Monday after vacation, do we like that? I, I, I have a hard time believing that we're going to have all those conferences solidified the week of February 21st, and then there's no availability for a parent to call the teacher the week prior to parent conferences to schedule something. Just a thought.
Yep.
So I guess, because not having the experience, this, you're, I guess implying that teachers or parents would want to reach out to their teachers prior to the parent-teacher conference?
Well, they're going to be, they're going to, the teachers are going to reach out to them, but, and again, I'm a fossil now, so I have to go back a little ways, but I find it hard to believe that we're not going to have, that we're going to have all of our parents communicating with us two weeks prior to parent conference, what time they can come that day. I think it's going to be difficult for them as the, the week before approaches and it becomes closer on the calendar, it's like, oh, I gotta, I'm going to call my teacher. They're not going to be able to, teachers are going to be out.
Oh, so you're saying the...
I just don't know if it's wise...
It's going to be a scheduling issue for parents to, to put forth two weeks forward on their calendar?
I don't think it's, I don't... I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I just don't think it's wise to have the week prior to parent conference day, no contact with teachers.
And for us to move it prior to vacation puts it too close on the heels of grades closing. For us putting it too far.
Why, why is it, I mean, there must be a reason for this, but why is it a Monday? It just, it used to be, I mean, could it be later in that week? Or you don't want the choppiness of it? I get it. You know, you're out for the week and so you have Monday off too, but.
Right.
I'll throw them like you're in shower. Why do we need parent teacher conferences? Shouldn't this be a continual process?
Of course it should be. I mean, this should never be the only contact that a family has with the teacher, ever.
But it is.
Ever.
And in a lot of ways, I think it is.
For some families, it might be. Certainly not for all families. It is a concerted effort or a designated time for that check-in to be more formalized. Should it be an ongoing process? Absolutely. And, you know, if the first time a family connects with a teacher is in March, now, for the high school with semester classes, that may be your first opportunity. But certainly with all the other avenues that we have for contact now, particularly electronic, this shouldn't be your first introduction to that person at all.
I can tell you what happens now.
I'm not saying that it doesn't, it shouldn't be.
But what I'm saying is how we're looking at this. And again, this goes back to one of those, this is how we've always done it. Do we need to always deal with this way? I mean, is it, does, does parent teacher conference become, you know, a certain amount of prep time once a month that a, and, and I'm not saying this is the way it'd be. You know, I'd like to have feedback. I'd like to hear from teachers. But doesn't it make sense to do it a monthly basis? And kind of schedule that or work that around in so that you're hitting, you know, everybody? And you're hitting the student that's in need? And you're also hitting the parents or the students that are excelling? Just too many conversations saying, hey, your son or daughter is doing phenomenal.
Certainly not opposed to that idea.
I'm just putting it out on, you know, for the calendar purposes on a concept. And the teachers and the union might have a different perspective. I don't know. And I'm not saying that perspective is wrong. I'm just putting out of the box out there, why are we, you know, I don't want to say wasting, but why are we tying up a day on the calendar just for meetings?
But if you have, if a teacher has, how many students does each teacher have? Or parents that they need to conference with?
It depends. At the, well, at the elementary level, you're, you're looking at probably less than 20.
Okay.
For self-contained classroom teachers. For UA teacher at any level, the PE teacher at Valley View sees every Valley View student. So 200 and something.
But during parent teacher conference, how many parents, or is the average that teacher is meeting?
And again, it depends. I mean, if you're looking at a self-contained teacher at the elementary level, up through probably sixth grade or so, they may see the majority of the parents scheduled throughout the day. Once you get into secondary, those numbers drop off significantly. I had up to, I think one year I had 162 students that year for secondary. That's, that was when we had a whole lot higher enrollment here at the high school. But with that, on a parent conference day, I might only see 12 parents. But I was in contact with several more than that. And oftentimes, it was more, you know, those conferences were more the intensives and the others were the typical check-ins.
Correct me if I'm wrong, on the scheduling for conferences that were conducted today, the time period slotted were 15 minutes?
15 to 20 minutes, depending upon the, the building levels.
So.
Mr. King, just, building principals used to collect from each teacher, the percentage of parents that they saw in those days. Is that data still collected?
My understanding is that that was asked from at least two levels that I know of, and I didn't get to check in with all three principals.
But it's, it's easy data to collect.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, every teacher knows how many parents they saw. Could we see that data?
Sure.
Maybe next week? I'd like to see it. I don't know if you guys would.
No, I'd like to see that. Getting back to Joel's point, or question on a parent teacher conference on the 7th, regardless of when vacation is, doesn't it make sense to move that till later in the week so that we get some relief for parents that may not be able to protect their schedule two weeks in advance?
Do we look at the 9th?
I just.
Go to our Wednesday.
Well, honestly, do, do we have to make that decision right now?
We don't.
No.
Because I think if we get that data next week, because Tim brought up a good, you know, question like, you know, how, basically, do, do we need it at a specific day? I mean, let's look at, you know, what do we get in participation? Typically, in the past, the first one is much more, much more participation than the second one of school year. We'd be curious to see.
I'm curious, but I also, I mean, I also want to have feedback from our teachers before, before I say this is the right way to, to go. The teacher feedback's important. Is this a valuable tool for you? You find that it working? You know, are we fixing something that's not broken? But I, I think we, you know, we should question, is there a different way or is there a better way of doing it?
So, Don, when do we need to have this solidified?
September 1st.
May would be good.
Okay. And I guess we got time for a survey?
The sooner it's solidified, the easier it is to do some planning moving forward. But some of these dates aren't necessarily going to shift. Once we have the beginning dates determined so that we can get payroll schedules set up as we're moving infinite visions, those paydays aren't going to change if we move a vacation week or we move a parent conference. So we're good there.
So if we were going to ask people regarding the holiday, where we should put it, who would we ask? Teachers, students, parents, or everybody? I mean, right now, there's five people sitting here ready to make this decision, or not ready to make this decision. And based upon Tim's thoughts of like, should we be asking the people that it affects? I don't know. Throw it out for discussion.
I'm all about collecting outside data. If, if, if we've got a little bit of time and, and there's a parental involvement or there's a teacher involvement, you know, let's look at those numbers. Because I don't, you know, I, I may not be the best one to make that decision. But I might make a better decision when I look at feedback from my teachers or parents or students.
If I'm going to send a survey regarding vacation and parent conference usefulness, it would be good to send one survey with a couple of questions rather than multiple surveys as far as getting feedback.
Yeah.
So.
I'm all about.
What would you like to see?
Well, I, I think as far as the week of vacation, the survey would have to indicate the two weeks in question and the issues that are with both. One, the first one, if it's, we stick to our normal one, it would be mismatch of schedules with Governor Wentworth. If we move it, it would be a mismatch of historically when that vacation happened. I guess those are the two apparent ones. And how it affects the people involved and what they, what they feel about it. I mean, how do you put that into questions? The parent teacher conference, I don't have an opinion on. But I do agree with Joel that having a dead day is potentially not the best day. One day it could be. I'm open to what it, moving in, you know, because I think people are going to have vacation on their mind, not parent teacher conference. If there's a little bit of time after that, then they can say, yeah, I really want to make time to go to see my daughter or son's teacher regarding their math grade or science grade or what's going on in the classroom.
Are you looking for larger feedback around parent teacher conferences as far as, do you find them useful? Is this current?
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
Is this current format working for your family? Is, is there one you would prefer?
Did you participate? Why? Why not?
What would you like to see different? How could it change to benefit you or your child? I mean.
So I'm happy to work with the FTA in putting together a survey? Or is that something you want this to be your survey? The Farmington Teachers Association.
Okay.
Surely to their, to their people or to the public?
I'm looking at wanting to put together a survey for their folks.
Yeah.
But also if we're going to put, here's things that we might change to, it makes sense that we're proposing things that would be acceptable to the union?
Yep. I mean, I, yeah, I, I think we go to the public and I think we, we go to whatever staff that these changes would affect. I mean, if we keep an extra janitors to open doors, you know, because of what we're doing now or whatever.
Today's were all.
Virtual, yeah.
They were all remote, so. And actually, we've had this year, at least in, in the fall, better numbers with it being remote than when parents had to come here. Because, you know, they weren't necessarily finding someone to take care of junior while they came in, or if they already had that.
So you're going to give us those information?
We'll get those numbers.
So are you going to also give us the last couple of years?
Where it's available, I will do my best to do that. I don't know with new administrators if they're going to be able to go back and put their hands on where last year's data is, but we'll find out.
Because what you just stated, there's better participation.
Anecdotally, I don't have the number, I have the, as we've taught, it's, they feel like there was better participation. Do I have a solid number to give you? Admittedly, I do not.
Ah, I thought you were going to splice with the data to back that up.
If I can, you'll have it, Charlie.
Okay. That'd be good.
You're wearing a mask. You can stick your tongue out and get away with it. I do it all the time.
Not this time.
No, but I mean, I mean, sometimes it's statements flying around and, you know, what people feel. But it'd be good to see the historical data because it will also get back to the discussion of if we're going to consider revising teacher, teacher parent conference. We can say, because anybody could dispute that argument or the opinion because there's no other data. So you could say there's more people participated. Somebody says, I don't believe that. I think it's less because I didn't participate. So it's no different than.
So it didn't help you.
It's no different than a parking study we had downtown, done by Stratford Regional Planning. Everybody said, there's no parking spaces available downtown. We got a parking problem. We got a parking problem. We get the results from Stratford Regional Planning over these days and we're like, well, it really doesn't appear that there's a parking problem. So.
I think the survey is a good idea too. It gives people a forum to voice their opinion more than just Facebook.
What's that?
It gives people the chance.
No, no, he's, he's being facetious.
Well, I'm not on that, so.
The platform that should remain nameless.
Someday it will be. Right with, what was the one before that? That was on AOL?
Myspace.
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 That's the one.
And that was on that either. Myspace. Meet the way of the dodo bird.
Told you it was going to be a long meeting.
Okay. Calendar approval, well, that's, that's going to take some work. Moving on next to the learning loss committee.
Do you want to start?
Sure. Some, some of the items we went over, we discussed heating and ventilation, bandwidth upgrade, some of the other items are buses, building maintenance, childcare, tutoring. And one of the, the more alarming things for me was truancy rates at the, at the schools, which is going to be an item we're going to delve into further in, in future meetings. I think they're alarmingly high. I think it presents a need for a truancy officer. I think parents need to be held to account if they're not making their child go to school.
Now, I don't think the entire board's seen the data yet, but where did you see the truancy versus our students who are remote versus in person?
It's higher remote, but it's high either way.
Significantly higher or just slightly higher?
Slightly higher.
I think it, I think it depends on whether you're looking at percentages or hard numbers on, on the truancy numbers. I kind of want to start out is, is my intention was to have a written report like we did last time to the board for this meeting. That didn't happen because of uncontrollable circumstances over the weekend that I got tied up. So what my vision is, and kind of what we're looking for direction from the board is, we'll have that report for the next meeting. We also have another meeting scheduled for, for this Friday. But what I'd like to do is explain what the board discussed pretty much in detail. And we came out of that meeting last Friday with a bunch of recommendations for the board to consider that Josh touched on. So within our report, kind of what form do you want us to bring into the board? And I'm not looking for immediate action, although there might be some things that you say, I want to act on this now. But I'm thinking kind of a checklist of, these are the recommendations that committee's going to make to the board. And then the board can look at it as a board and decide, this is our priority to, to deal with A, B, and C. Because some of these are going to have to be fairly quick decisions and some of them are going to have to be long-term with the money.
And you're saying it's going to have a next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of bring out, does that make sense to, in that format to the board? For instance.
I don't have any preconceived expectations.
Let me, let me, let me give you an example. One of the recommendations is going to be to increase the bandwidth within our district for what we're doing with our one-on-one computers out of the COVID money. So if the board's going to support that, it makes sense for me to go to a staff member and say, hey, can you get pricing?
Yeah.
If the board's not going to support it, it's a waste of time.
Well, for me to go to a staff member and get pricing, yes.
Maybe. But I'm just kind of looking for direction on the board on how they want to see it. Does it make sense to say, hey, these are our, our areas? And then the board can define, yep, okay, let's look at pricing to do A, B, C, D, and E? Or does it, do you want a package that you would lock?
I don't have any problem taking them incrementally because if you wait till you get everything totaled, you may be, take the time and extend it, and then you're going to miss, you're going to burn a lot of that time you're going to need for investigation or fact finding. Because you may say, okay, we're going to go this way, but if you're too late to, to party, hey, we're going to need a bus. Hey, they're all spoken for.
Right.
Or we need this upgrade and it's two, three months from now and we don't do any investigation prior, we may find out, well, it's going to take three months to get in a queue. And if you wait two months, you know, it's not going to be online when we need it. So.
Okay.
I'm okay, I'm okay with basically taking them incrementally because at this point, hopefully there's sufficient amount of funding for anything that we want to be able to do based upon the proposed dollar amount. I mean, it's not like there's not, there's only, you know, $100,000 there.
We'll probably, you know, go ahead and yell at me. Yeah, I did take the time de-stressing to read part of the 345 pages of the bill that was passed on Saturday.
Me too.
And my read of it is that the distribution formula is going to be the same. We're going to have a little bit more discretion on how we spend some of the money. But we're potentially looking at what we just, what our final number in the ESA II will probably be repeated in ESA III. So we're looking at potentially over $3 million in federal funding coming in the district. The last thing that I'll.
What's going to be the, what's the time period on the ESA 3?
We don't know. It hasn't even, this, right now, it went from the Senate, it's back in the House, they have to agree to the changes, the Senate, and then it's going to go to the President. So, it hasn't been signed by the President yet. If it does and there's no changes, then we're looking at 3 million.
And-
Potentially.
And if there is a change, it's probably going to at least look like the SPSRF. So, there's another chunk, what we had in December. So, it's, it's somewhere between 150,000 and 1.7 million.
Yeah. So, the last thing in, just so you understand on the structure of the committee is, you know, I got to say, the administrative staff has been phenomenal, the cooperation and excitement's been phenomenal. We've had some pretty intense discussions over two meetings, and we have a meeting scheduled Thursday. You're probably going to see us take, okay, this is the corrects, this is our immediate needs, now we're going to back off and we're probably going to end up meeting bi-weekly to monthly or whatever. Because I think we've taken the important critical issues that you're talking about, Charlie, this is the stuff we got to move, you know, summer school preparation, tutoring, how are we going to do that? And then we're going to, you know, branch out, so it's not a weekly thing. So, we're meeting weekly now. We see that as we get the important things on the table, cutting down a little bit and or convening as we need to, you know, based on the recommendation of superintendent.
Okay. So, you're going to have that to us?
I'll have a written report for, up in the board for, for Friday, on our recommendations and anything that comes out of next Friday's meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else under, any other discussion on that from other board members? Questions? Next, we have any other old business with Ellen? We must be, we must have some.
What is the, what's the status on the grade averages from now versus then that we talked about prior?
That's what we were in process of working on for-
Friday.
Friday, for the learning loss committee. We had portions of that, and we'll have, I mean, I have some of the numbers where, are you wanting that for learning loss or for here or for both?
Both. I think it'd be good for everyone to see.
Okay. So, for you guys Friday and for-
Is it possible that you can distribute to the rest of the board the truancy information that was referred to?
Yep.
Yeah, I can put that in writing, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have the data, yeah.
Either be part of the report that you're putting forward or, I mean, because-
Okay, if it's in the report, it's fine.
We gave it verbally, we didn't hand out papers.
Because it's, it's tough for students to learn if they're not participating.
Well, there's going to be some-
Or present.
Or present.
For that next meeting is also going to be some recommendations under truancy policy, and some discussions on change in policy, where we're actually potentially going to be holding parents responsible alongside the processes running for the kids, for the board to take a look at.
Okay. Ruth Ellen, anything else on old business?
I'm just writing down what I got to get down here. Okay.
Do you want some more? Some more help?
I do have the rough-out of those changes to the truancy policy now. I can put those up so that you have a little bit more time to review those. We could get that in there for, you know, well, it won't be tonight probably, maybe tomorrow morning. And then you'd have the balance of the week to look at that if you need to.
Yeah, I mean, don't hurry on tomorrow, because I think at least two of us are going to be at the polls all day as workers.
Well, then I'll be there tomorrow night as well, so.
So, far as participation from this board at the meeting, tomorrow night's voting, the selectmen are there to sign off on the ballot boxes, so there's no requirement for us to be there, right?
Well, there's ballot box for the town, we have our own warrant.
So, do we have to have three members of the board present to sign it?
The, you know, the clerk, the clerk's in?
Yeah.
We can, we can ask the board-
You can, you don't have to.
Okay.
We can ask the board a selectman to certify it for us.
No, I can be there, I just didn't know what our requirement was.
Yeah, proper practice is, or the preferred practice is, is that the school board certify their own, like we did at the special election.
Correct.
So-
Two of us are going to be there anyway.
I'm going to be at the polls, I'm going to come in and vote at the end, so I'll be available for that.
Okay. And I'll be down there, too.
I'm voting at 8:00 AM. I'm going to be one of those early people in line, so.
I'll be there between 6:00 and 6:45 and 7:00.
Okay.
And I'll stay for-
And I will be there for, for results capture.
I'll stay and do my pacing until they call the ticket date.
Okay.
Do we have anything else for public, for probably go to public participation? Not hearing, do we have any public participation, Jen?
No, I did put a message in the chat for the three, those of you who are still left online, if you'd like to unmute yourself at this time to share with the board, please do so. And I do not have a message in the chat waiting. I did ask a second time if anyone would like to participate at the end of the meeting. I do not see any messages at this time.
Okay, thank you, Jen. So, at this point, I'd like to thank everyone for watching and participating and-
Mr. King.
Go ahead, Joel.
Let me just say one thing. I'd like to thank Stan Frieda for his service as school board, this is his last night as a school board member. Stan, thank you very much, it was a pleasure to serve with you.
Yeah, thank you for your service, Stan.
Thank you, you're welcome.
And I'd also like to wish good luck to the three people running for school board, Mary Barron, Stacy Lozey, and Jessica Parker. I think it's great that we have interest in becoming board members, so good luck to them.
Okay. That's right. So, anybody watching, remember there is elections tomorrow, and town meeting is Wednesday night, polls are open at-
8:00 AM?
8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Correct. Old town hall.
Town hall.
Town hall.
It's kind of old, but.
The one with the pillars.
Okay, our next meeting will be next week. At this point, I'll make a motion to go in a non-public session at RSA 918, colon 32, A, B, and C nominations and resignations.
Check them.
I'll have favor.
All right.